Welcome to the Bryan City Council meeting Monday, October 7th. Please join me as supposed to play the regions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is approval of the minutes from September 18th. For 16, sorry, I'm going to move on.
So moved.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Item number three is carrying in public concerns. I'm on up, Mr. Cox.
Steve Cox, Huntington Drive, Bryan. Two items. The first, I wish to thank the council's efforts for getting the dead end sign in place at the top front of Huntington Drive. Hopefully that will keep some of the large trucks from missing a turn and trying to go through our neighborhood. The second point that I have, and would like to give this to you, Madam President.
What is it?
This is a piece of the shattered asphalt that I've been coming about. It's a piece of Huntington. I was able to pick that up by my fingers, no prying, no nothing. It was loose.
It's heavy.
And there are many more pieces like that right now. My concern is the first snowplow that goes over that area of the road is going to rip it to hitties and back. And that needs to be addressed. Tar and gravel will not do it. It has to be repaired. Enough said. Thank you.
Who would you like to call up to address that?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Do I want to call out? Which one would like to address that?
I think, too, if we give a little short history, because, Mr. Cox, you have been here many times, and you brought a petition, and I think part of it was very clear you did not want samples dug of your street to figure out what was underneath it, and that the neighbors did not want that to happen. So, do you want to go from there?
Huntington Drive is a chip-seal roadway. It started out as a stone road. Tar was added, and a layer of stone, and layers of tar, and layers of stone. So what he's picking up, some people might say is asphalt. It's an asphalt product. It's years of chip-seal going together there. And it is a chip-seal road. It cannot simply be paved with asphalt, because in the center, the stone might be 12, 14 inches thick, because the road probably started out 14 feet wide, 15, I don't know. And over time, the berm widened out, the berm widened out. So at the edges, we assume the stone's three inches thick, which is a couple inches of tar and stone together, which is what it probably has at the end that he pulled up from the edge, because there's probably nothing under it there. So, as I've talked to you guys before, we can't just simply pave the road. Full-depth removal needs to happen to do that. So until then, my recommendation to the street commissioner is just to continue to spot-patch, as he did in years before, and continue with the seal coat. What the seal coat does is that tar and seal, it puts tar in, the tar fills the cracks, fills the voids, and will hold these loose pieces together. Stone goes over the top to protect the tar, to keep it from coming up through. So until we're able to figure out a way to do a full-depth removal in that neighborhood with one entrance, so I don't know how I'm going to completely remove the first 500 feet of that development and keep people in without putting a stone driveway in the yards of the residents, getting temporary easements to get back in to do that, my recommendation is just to continue to chip-seal the roadway and keep up on maintenance. So that's where I'm at, and I don't know where the street commissioner's at, but I know, I believe we have it scheduled to actually do another layer of seal coat, to seal these cracks with tar and stone over them to help hold that together. So that's, if Tyson's got anything else, that's all I have.
To seal those chunks, the only thing we have to seal those chunks and hold them together is Durapatch. And that's what we did a year and a half ago, two years ago, when this all started. And he said that he and all of his neighbors do not want the Durapatch in their neighborhood ever again. So we haven't. Here we are. It's going to get chip-sealed in the next week or two. That's all I have.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
When I presented to Mr. Ospech when he was out, kind enough to take an actual look at the situation, the previous, prior to this chip and seal nonsense, the, they brought in a unit, the ground, the street material, reheated it, reapplied it, and there was immediately behind it a steamroller to press it in. And this is what we'd like done. So I don't see where the technical problem is. It was done that way, and it lasted many years, much better than this tar, which may or may not get down in the cracks. And if it doesn't, when the water gets in, in the winters, for cold, it freezes, and ice will expand and break more new cracks and widen the existing ones. This is a solvable problem, but you're not going to fix the road with tar and gravel.
I've been here 19 years. I've been here 19 years and never seen that process.
And I've been here 27 and never seen that in Bryan, Ohio.
Where they mill it and heated and put it back.
I was walking on the street when they did.
It was a seal coat. They do not.
How many years ago? Maybe seven-ish? I don't remember the exact.
That was a chip-seal. That was a chip-seal, sir. Absolutely. They sprayed tar on, they put stone on, they rolled it.
No, I didn't. I was there when it went through.
Sir, I'm not going to argue with you, but between Tyson and I, we have written the purchase orders for that street for the last 18, 26 years. I've never written a purchase order to do that there. I'm sorry. All we've done is chip.
Well, then, somebody of the goodness of their heart came and did it that way, because it was done. I witnessed it, and I will attest to that.
Okay. We're just going to move on now. Item number four is an ordinance. Don, please come over and read.
Ordinance number 37, 2024, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a master service agreement and order with Cronos Sasher Incorporated, a UKG company, for cloud-based human resources software and associated subscription services, and declaring an emergency. And I'll take this one. So currently, the city, the clerk treasurer's office is in the process of upgrading our finance software, as you may or may not all be aware, I'm sure it's been going on for a couple of years, or talking about. That includes a new payroll system that will have the capability of having timekeeping information uploaded into it. Currently, we have three departments who use three different timekeeping or scheduling pieces of software. BMU is one, police department is another, and I believe the fire department uses a The BMU piece of software is old, has been outdated for a number of years, is no longer serviceable, it's kind of a, kind of an old story with software. And they are definitely looking to replace their system. And in those situations, we've decided, or we are proposing, that we not only replace BMU's software, but that we go to a citywide, uniformed version of software, so that we're all utilizing the same timekeeping. And eventually, we'll all be able to be uploaded into payroll, and so that's where we are. BMU is looking to go forward with this one way or the other. I believe, we believe that it's in the best interest to have a citywide system and that it be the same one. Currently, between the police and fire department, I think they're spending about $6,300 a year for their two pieces. BMU's is effectively at no cost now, because it's obsolete. The cost for this software, there's a $3,225 one-time setup fee, and then approximately $23,000 a year after that. Initially, it'd be a three-year contract. And those costs will be absorbed across the board, BMU, each city department. It'll be allocated by headcount within each department. So any one department is really not feeling too much pain to cover this cost. Derek Schultz, Trish Lyons, HR, and myself, I think with some help from folks from police and fire as well, have been, they tested a few different products, and the product from Cronos was the one that is selected they'd like to proceed with. Cronos is a large, well-established, one of the largest timekeeping software providers, I believe, in the country. So no issue in terms of a quality product that will be able to handle all of our various needs in terms of complex scheduling. So the BPA took up this issue at their meeting last week to effectively request and authorize the council to proceed on their behalf. They are on board to pick up their share of the council.
There's no questions. I'll move.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. No, go ahead. I was going to move suspend.
Yeah, that's what, I'll second that.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome. Item number five is two liquor permits.
Yeah, so bear with me on this, because typically, we do these together, but there's actually three, and I would like to address them separately. The first one is for Taco's Nachos, and it is a D1, respectfully requesting that you make a motion to waive the local hearing. So do you have any questions on that one? That's in their existing building now on Main Street.
I'll make a motion to waive the hearing.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Or was it Rick?
It was Rick.
I'm sorry. Steve, Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we're all out of practice. That's why.
Okay. The next one, and this would have been helpful at our last meeting, this is for the liquor agency contract. And they have put on this one that we're going to receive two separate notices. So the notice we got first was the C1 and C2, which was the beer and wine. This is for the actual state liquor permit. So we'll do the one that we haven't addressed yet, which is the liquor agency contract. And actually, the two business owners are here, would love to address you with any questions you have. I would like you to know that we, obviously, these minutes have not been approved by the zoning commission, but Andy and I and Brian have reviewed them, so included them in your packet. And the zoning commission did approve a variance for, for them to go from 40 spaces to 26, and also the circulation aisle width reduction of 20 feet to, from 20 feet to nine. So that has gone through that variance process. They did get it confirmed in multiple conversations that the variance does not now go through council, if the level was the planning and zoning commission. So if you guys want to, want to suggest, I also talked to Mark Fischel, our legal counsel. His recommendation is, because this is the Department of Commerce and the state, they have scored this company, they are the highest scorer. He recommends that you waive both hearings, go back to the one that you had two weeks ago, and also waive that hearing for the beer and wine. That is our city attorney's recommendation, but the two owners wanted to join us today and personally go over any questions or concerns that any council members.
So what's on the table is two and three? You had three issues. One taken care of, two and three.
So I want to address just the liquor agency contract right now, on whether you'll waive the hearing.
Oh, okay.
And then I also, once you've figured that out, I'm going to ask you if you will rescind your initial request for a local hearing, waive the hearing for the beer and wine. And that's why I wanted to do it three different ways, because it's different than what we've ever done before. But again, it is council's wishes.
I'm sorry, can you do me a favor, please, and repeat what you just said again for the two?
So what I, what I'm asking for on a motion is on the state liquor agency permit, we will address the beer and wine sales after you address the liquor store.
Okay. And then what about the factor, the motion that I had at last council meeting for the hearing?
Well, once you decide what you guys are going to do, this, I'll ask you to address the second one. If you decide to have a local hearing on this, then I'm not going to probably ask you to do anything, you'll just have two local hearings. If you decide to waive the local hearing, I'm going to request that you guys decide whether you're going to rescind your original motion and waive the hearing on the liquor or the beer and wine, which is the C1, C2. So that's why I thought we would address the big animal first, so that we know what to do with the third part. Fair enough?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. President Leatherman, how do you want to?
Considering that a lot of the questions that we have been answered, everything seems to be pretty reasonable, I move that we waive the hearing for the liquor.
Liquor agency contract.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
And Mary?
Yes.
Now, we are moving on to the C1, C2 permit that was before you at the last council meeting, respectfully requesting that you rescind the original motion and also waive the local hearing. Your choice again. Again, this is for beer and wine, C1, C2, same location.
I so move.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
And Mary?
Yes.
Okay. So that is a majority, so both passed. Is there any more discussion from council?
No, it's just that I'd like to tell the two gentlemen, you did a nice job. I went to the, what was that called, zoning hearing?
Planning commission, planning and zoning meeting.
Planning and zoning commission. And through that process, you answered my questions. I think the comment I made became rather obvious as to where my stand was after I heard you answer my questions. But more importantly, I talked to three of the people that presented their concerns, and privately, I have no interest in exposing those three individuals, two of which are liquor permit holders in Bryan, and all three said they were satisfied, predominantly, I think it was in the paper, if it wasn't, I think I'm going to repeat it. It was, what won them over, I think what surprised everybody, certainly me, and everyone was, the delivery. When? And that if it's local, it's free, even if it's within the county, a certain distance, it was like 10 bucks. I think that won a lot of the liquor permit holders over, because what they're doing now is paying for labor and costs to drive. And I will stand by what my statement was at that hearing and repeat it, which is, I don't think I understand what the alternative is that is more positive. It looks like it's nothing but more potential negative. So I appreciated you coming and answering, one, two, three, four, five, I think six, something like that, five, six different people, questions to their, to their satisfaction, at least three of the ones that I talked to, their satisfaction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say, though, I do appreciate the article that the Bryan Times put in. That was a good article, very clear, easily understood, and I also appreciate Mr. Whelan and Mayor Slade for representing us. I will state, though, that I think it's a very nice gesture on your part to do the deliveries, but I will state that I do not find 27 parking spaces until I count the ones at Circle K. And unless I'm planning to park 27 motorcycles or 27 bicycles in the front of your building, I'm not sure how we're going to fit 27 parking spaces in front of that building. As someone who drives through there and have had several people come up to me, and they are in the same position I am, they are concerned about the factor, the amount of traffic, the lack of parking, and the simple factor that that front area of that business is not very big. We have to deal with the traffic from Circle K, we have to deal with the traffic from Big Big Coffee, we have to deal with the traffic from Little Caesar's Pizza. Granted, there is no traffic that we're, is of notable, noticeable or notable impact when it comes to the employment agency that's there. I will state that those businesses contribute quite a bit. I'm going to be really intrigued and watch closely the parking lot situation, the ability to move through there, and also the simple factor of deliveries. Again, I think it's, it's admirable of you to offer that, to deliver to businesses in Bryan. I think that's a great move, and I do applaud you for that, but I'm really concerned about the amount of traffic on a road that is eventually going to be causing issues for the city of Bryan and the people of the Fourth Ward.
I mean, sorry, you know, we're in this for the long run, so we're always going to work with the city. You know, there's parking on both sides of the building as well, and that's what the zoning hearing was about, is actually increasing the spaces on the west end, and we're actually going to deepen them, we can go seven feet further, so that's, as opposed to the five. So, you know, I think that should alleviate a lot of the concerns. Most of our traffic is at night, and from what I heard, most of the issues people have are early morning issues with traffic, with the coffee, with Circle K being busy early in the morning, that sort of thing. And, you know, our, our business isn't, you know, we don't pick up till probably around four or five o'clock in the evening.
I do not drive through there in the mornings. I drive through there in the afternoons.
Oh, okay.
And I can tell you, it is busy in the afternoons.
Okay.
I feel bad for the semi-truck drivers who have to try to turn down onto South Street, even though the city's done a lot to try to help them out. It's still a hard turn for them to make, still a challenge for cars coming out of Circle K. So I do appreciate that, but I have yet to see a map that honest to goodnessly, or any type of sketch, that shows me how you're going to get 27 parking spaces into that lot.
Yeah. I think it's still on that.
We have one.
Yeah.
You need where to put it? Why am I blind?
Yeah.
This one?
Yep. So it's on the west end here. Right now, there's only three parking spaces that run vertically along the building.
Correct.
So there's about 10 feet of grass here. What we're going to do is extend the parking lot seven feet up closer to the building, and we're going to turn all those parking spaces upward on.
And there's also parking on Walnut Street, too, as well, six, seven, eight spots, maybe, right there. Yep.
I believe something else you mentioned that was somewhat helpful was that, and if I get the number wrong, you please correct me, but I thought you said you were going to have X number of cashiers, it was like four?
Yeah.
So you're, the point was, you're going to be turning people over?
And I think that's an issue that Circle K, not to speak badly about Circle K, but after the zoning hearing last week, I spent about two, three hours on site there watching the traffic. I went in Circle K. You know, they run one employee, they're, they want everybody to use that self-checkout, which nobody knows how to use, and, you know, if they're buying tobacco or beer, then somebody has to come over. So that kind, that tends to increase traffic, just because people are there longer. Our average customer's in a store under five minutes, you know, so it's in and out.
I understand. I'm not questioning your business practices.
Oh, I know.
I'm not questioning you as businessmen and the least bit. I appreciate all that you've done, and, and I'm sure that you will do. But my concern still is the, the traffic situation that exists at that location.
What's your delivery plan? Like when you have delivery trucks come in?
So the biggest truck that runs is the stay truck for liquor. They deliver, we were told our delivery's going to be at 6:00 in the morning. I don't know which day yet, but they said we're the first on the route. So they would come in, we're, we're putting a seven-foot-wide cement path along the back to a delivery door. So they would pull into here, the delivery would, they'd pull it around the pallet into our back, where we have an overhead door, a typically existing mound. They'd bring it in. Beer and wine, that has to be worked out with the companies. I imagine they would all be on the same truck as Circle K when they get their delivery.
When is your target for opening?
Well, it just depends on when all this finishes, so we can get in and start working. You know, we'd like to be open before the holidays, so, yeah.
So that's your second option, right? That if, if the truck driver couldn't make the back-end turn, he would just go out front?
Yes, exactly.
He or she?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the key was, that was after hours, when nobody should be in the parking lot.
That's right.
Because I had questioned, how's the truck going to pack in there if cars are sitting there? But delivery trucks at 6:00 a.m., no cars there.
Shouldn't be anybody there. Yeah.
Yeah.
Here's a silly question, too, that just popped in my head. What happens, like, if you find out that this space isn't going to work? Is your, do you have options to go to a different space in the community, or?
So, I mean, down the line, maybe in 10 years, if we wanted to move, if we felt it outgrew the space, but right now, no. When you bid from a location, that's your location, the state approves. So, because part of the bid process is you have to put in traffic studies, you know, area location, a lot of areas are dry in Bryan, you know, so it's just a lot goes into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what we're finding is that we think Rite Aid was actually dry and went through a ballot measure all those years ago to be able to sell. And so, once it changed to, from Rite Aid, that's no longer an option.
So it was associated with Ri, it was riding on Rite Aid's?
Yeah.
Process?
With that facility location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good, if everyone else is good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is item number six, a building permit.
Tonight, I have a permit for Nighthart Enterprises. This is at 1060 South Union Street. He is proposing to build more storage units. Ben Schmucker Construction will be doing the work. Zone is I-1, state construction type is 2B, use group is S-1. Cost for the building is $155,000, 4,480 square foot storage building. It'll be eight units, 14 by 40 feet deep.
Is that right bare by where the ones are?
Be by, behind his current ones.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes the items on the agenda. We'll go around the room. Mayor, do you have anything?
Do you want me to handle the trash, or do you? I have dates.
Go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah.
I don't want to steal your thunder. So we are going to have our fall trash drop-off again for City of Bryan residents. That will be Thursday, October 17th, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Friday, October 18th, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, October 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Items must be dropped off at the street department on Town Line Road, and you must provide proof of residency with your BMU, utility bill, or Republic Service Bill. Again, these are for City of Bryan residents only, but it is their unlimited fall pickup or drop-off.
Thank you. Anything else? John, you have anything?
Did we hit the, I'm just, I can't remember, and it bothered me, if we did, did we do the third part of that liquor permit, then, of which was, we were going to rescind the hearing?
Yes, it was a motion with John and Jim.
Thank you. Thank you for accommodating an old guy. Appreciate it.
No, we got it. Thank you for checking.
John, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Any department heads have anything? Yes, chief?
Stop, Bernie.
I'm just going to make another public reminder. It is dry out there. We're
We don't have any rain forecast again, so before we get to another burn ban, let's just be careful. Wind picks up in the afternoon this time of year. So don't go home, burn the leaves, because you shouldn't be burning leaves anyway. But any open burning needs to be watched very closely. Make sure you've got a way to put it out. It will jump rather quick, and combines are in the field. And we've seen some dust. We've had a couple calls on those. They thought they were fires. Fortunately, ours were not. Fulton County did have one yesterday that got a little bit big. So, just be careful out there and be mindful that things are dry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department head? BMU? Nothing? Newspapers? With that, I would like a motion to go in executive session.
Could I, could I ask something first? Andy, how's the sign thing going? Election signs, it's election time. Are people abiding by what they need to abide by?
As far as I know, I believe-
No, I wasn't.
I wasn't very much last week, so I don't.
You haven't had any complaints in the last week?
Yeah, I don't.
Good.
I haven't received any complaints yet, so.
It'll probably kick up in the next week or so, signs are just kind of starting.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to ask.
It's three days out.
Things happening. Sorry.
So, yeah, just remember, behind the sidewalk, or if you don't have a sidewalk, the terrace. Don't, don't put it out too close to the street.
Are we good? Can I please have a motion go in executive session?
So moved.
Say the whole thing, please. Executive session four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Executive session to go in compensation of other employee. Sorry about that.
Yep, so moved.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.